Welcome to The Voice of Houston. I'm your co-host, Bobby Mills. Welcome to the show. Today we have a very special guest with us, Commissioner Jack Cagle, Precinct 4. Forget, or do not forget, to watch us on UHN-TV, Roco TV, and don't forget to vote on November 8. Commissioner, welcome to the show. You're looking good.
Thank you.
God bless you, God keep you. And how you doing today?
I am doing excellent, and I want to, want to thank you for inviting me back for a second episode with The Voice of Houston.
Amen. Tell us, there are a couple of important things going on in, in the county. One is the new proposed ideas about the internet ring around Harris County. What's your feeling about that? What, you know, do you feel that the county should control it, or should people who are basically responsible for, and, you know, experts in the field, should they be more involved? Or what's, what's your feeling on that?
I always get a little bit nervous when someone uses the word "control." I'm not a huge fan of, of that word "controlled by people", because when you get too much control, then you start picking winners and losers. However, I do believe that the internet is a great equalizer. Libraries have been a source where folks could rise and excel, and grow, and expand their minds, and do well. And, and, and the internet is, in a way, sort of a modern library. And I believe that one of the very legitimate roles of county government is infrastructure. And usually, infrastructure comes in the forms of your roads, and making sure that the potholes are fixed and that the roads are safe. And they come in the role of your parks, because when you're done working at the end of the day, or with your family. And then during the pandemic, the, the fellows that I worked with in the Precinct 4 Parks Division, their, their catchphrase was "Every day is a Saturday", because Saturday historically was your busiest day in the parks. But during the pandemic, when people couldn't go anywhere else, they could go to their parks. And so every day became a Saturday from how that was made available to the public. The internet service, in my humble opinion, is like a road. But it is a road that's in the sky, and it allows everyone to have access. If I can make the illustration of a regular road, if there's a pothole on a regular road, a rich person, if they hit that pothole, you know, she, you know, she just, she has someone with her AAA card come and pull it out and fix it. And it may be a bump on the road, but it's not going to change her life. But if you are a single mom with a passel of kids, and barely able to make ends meet, and you blow out a tire in a pothole, that is going to be her rent month, her rent money for the next month. Or maybe the kids are going to have to go to Beanie Weenies and not be able to have the healthy meals that they need to have, because that's going to be an economic hit for them. And because if you're amongst the poor, it may be that she's going to lose a couple of hours of work that day. Well, a couple of hours of work for someone that's got a white collar job, that's not going to be a big deal. But if you are hourly wages, and you're paycheck to paycheck, and you missed two hours, you may not be able to make that up again. So the, one of the best ways that we can help improve people's lives is to make sure that our infrastructure is solid and safe, and it helps all stratus. You as a businessperson, if you're a businessperson, if your roads are bad, and the traffic is bad and congested, and you can only get three trips a day out for doing your delivery service, but if it was all fixed and you had adequate capacity in your roads, you could do five, then you can hire more people, you could do more business. It helps prosper where you are. Compare that to our internet. Kids, especially during the pandemic, needed the internet. And so we had all of the old precincts, we've gone through a redistricting process in Commissioners Court and, and...
Because of increase in population.
Well, because of the increase in population, we did need to redistrict and move 200,000 people. There's 4.7 million in the county now. However, for political reasons, the majority moved 2.3 million. They needed to move 200,000, but they moved 2.3 million. In fact, 1.23 million of those folks who were in the old precinct 4, who were going to vote on a commissioner this year, they don't get to vote on any commissioner this year, because they ended up getting Commissioner Ramsey. And then I took, in essence, Commissioner Ramsey's precinct. Our precincts got swept like that movie Freaky Friday. You know, we went to court on a Thursday, and Friday morning, we woke up and we were in each other's precincts. So if you are in three now, in the old four, you don't get to vote on your commissioner. Those folks may have voted for me, they may have voted against me, but they don't get to vote at all, because of the movement. So we're now in the west and the southwest of the county. We have a little bit of Bel Air, a little bit of Myerlin. We've got a touch of Sharptown, we got, I mean, the Spring Branch, we've got all of Sharptown, the Management District, International District, Chinatown. We've got, you know, Gulfton Region is in there. We've talked about Gulfton when we visited last time. And then we go down through that part of the county on the south, Districts F and J of the city, and G of the city. And then we go out, Cinco Ranch, and then up to Katy. And then we go north, and we actually have Hockley and Waller in the new precinct. And Hockley and Waller are kind of interesting folks there. There's actually as many people in the city of Waller and Harris County as there are in the county of Waller. And, and some folks say, "Well, how do you define the borders?" And I had somebody define them recently by the Buc-Ee's. You know, if you, if you're on the Buc-Ee's at 290 out there, that's, that's, you're just leaving the precinct. And if you're heading out to, headed towards Prairie View, if you pass that Buc-Ee's, you're just there leaving Precinct 4. And if you're going out Katy Way on I-10, and you see the Buc-Ee's over there, you're just heading the, the western portion of Precinct 4 at the Buc-Ee's. So we kind of have the Buc-Ee's as our borders.
Yeah, right. My goodness.
But we were talking about the internet.
Internet.
And the internet in the old precinct, we had them in all of our parks. And, and we're able to use some of the federal funding that had come our way to help with the pandemic. And the way that we used that funding was to provide internet access in our parks so that kids that weren't able to go to school could actually tie into the internet. So you could go to your park, to where we had, we had law enforcement there, because safe place to be, so you didn't have to worry about it being dangerous. It'd be, it'd be clean, and they have nice bathrooms. But you could come into one of your county parks, and then at your county park, you could tie in and do your homework on the internet. Now that we've had the redistricting and the official change occurred at the end of March, we are in the process of trying to make sure that the roadway of the skies is in all of our county parks. And then we're going to start partnering with the city of Houston to make sure that they're in the city parks that are in Precinct 4. And we're partnering with a group that you're involved with to make sure that we actually have computer labs and whatnot that's available as well. And we recently were able to do a groundbreaking for some soccer fields, but at the same time, we were able to do sort of a little bit of ribbon cutting for a project that Bridging the Digital Divide was involved in, so that we were able to partner with many hands to make the light load, to make our communities have access to the roadways of the sky, and to be the great equalizers.
So when this issue comes up for consideration, vote. How you think you will vote?
Oh, every time the, the issue of access via the internet for the public, I've been in favor of that. That is a legitimate function of county government. Now, every now and then, there'll be others who disagree with me, because in Commissioners Court, it seems like we're always wanting to tell Washington DC how to do their job. Or we're wanting to tell Austin, Texas, how to do their job. And I think that we ought to be minding our own business.
Doing your own job.
And we should be putting in internet service in the neighborhood. We should be making sure that the parks are clean, that they are mowed, that the bathrooms are safe. We need to make sure that there's adequate law enforcement patrol there. So you could send, when I was a kid, my parents didn't worry about me running down to go to the park. I ran around the neighborhood. And in fact, it used to be that if I got home, I was in trouble, because some other neighbor over there had called my mama and said, "Do you know what, what Little Cactus was doing over there?" And so, you know, we, we need to get back to making sure that our parks' mamas can feel comfortable letting their kids go play in the park, because they know that there'll be other mamas there, and they'll know that there'll be law enforcement there, where if a kid is in trouble, and, and we're, we're working hard with our county constables, in fact, we have made a transfer from my budget to our local Precinct 5 Ted Heaps budget to add 10 extra officers, just to be able to go into our parks more, so that folks can feel secure when they come in the park, that, that the officer there is their friend to make sure that they're having a good time, and to make sure that those who might be messing with your kids, you know, there's nothing like putting light on a problem.
Community policing, right.
You know, and of course, my, my old adage, we like to do a lot of trails, but the best law enforcement tool known to mankind is a grandma with a baby carriage and a cellphone. There ain't no better, ain't no better law enforcement tool than a grandma with a cellphone and a baby carriage, because she is going to make sure that that grandbaby is safe. And she'll have all those numbers that she knows to dial to make sure it's done right.
Well, and never forget that there is no better law enforcement than parents who know the spiritual law giver.
Amen.
And if parents know the spiritual law giver, you're not going to have to worry about young people, children obeying the law.
Well, Pastor Mills, I have a confession to make. I grew up in a time when in my church, my pastor whooped me. You know, these days, they can't do that, but I was a hard-headed little kid. I got whooped a lot. I got whooped by my parents, I got whooped by my pastor, I got whooped by my associate pastor. In fact, we had...
Was it because you were big and tall and whatever? You thought you could ramrod everybody?
No, this is before I was big and tall. I just was that kid whose mind wouldn't quit. So I was always checking into things, looking into things, getting into stuff. You know, I didn't necessarily always know that I wasn't supposed to be going into that room and, you know, looking at that, or the other thing. And I had to be educated. And in those days, there was a thing called the Board of Education. We don't have the Board of Education anymore.
We all know about that one.
Yeah, my, my, here I am confessing on, on TV, but when my, my daddy would have me go and get the belt. My mama would have me go out into the front yard and cut a switch from the willow tree. And if I had too small of a switch, she'd make me go out and get a bigger one.
Get a limb.
And, and my, my, my parents later on in life, they would tease me. They said that the lecture that they gave me, where they made me tell them what it was that I had done wrong, that I hated that far more. Apparently, when I was little, saying, "Just beat me", I didn't want to have to go through the, the come-to-Jesus moment of what it was that I had done wrong. But you know, I'm grateful that they loved me enough.
To chastise.
Because they, you know, as a parent, later on, that's not easy to discipline your kids. It's a whole lot easier to just dribble sugar on them and say, "Do whatever you want to". But they loved me enough to, to discipline me. And, and I was that child that needed a little extra disciplining, because I was so...
To help you learn how to deal with self-discipline.
Self-discipline. Because I, and, and in the scripture, we have a word called meekness. And a lot of folks think, you know, meekness means weak. But the word "meekness" in the Bible is a reference to a warhorse that is under control. So the picture, when they say that Jesus was meek, was not of some little wimp that's getting picked on in the schoolyard. What it is, is of a...
Because Jesus got a whip and...
Oh yeah, he drove him on out.
Yeah, drove him money changes out of town.
Yeah, he sure enough did. But the picture is of a powerful warhorse. Think of the leopards with all of their skills. And those horses, those riders, they just kind of nudge them with their knees, and that horse can do anything. And leap over lines, go through battle, fearless, powerful. That is a meek horse. And, and I'm not going to say that I'm a meek politician, or a meek person, but I'm grateful to my parents, and I'm grateful to my pastors, and I'm grateful to my teachers. I used to get whipped in school, too. But my daddy had a rule that if I got whipped in school, I got a whipping at home, because he always knew that they would hold back. And he wanted to make sure that I knew that whatever it was that I did at school was wrong, so that I would become someone who would be able to exercise self-control, self-discipline. And that's something I'm very grateful, because it's, I think that's one of the things that we struggle with a lot of times in our societies, people cannot control themselves.
Well, we have that problem in society today. Well, you know, I was not quite like you. I, I got two whippings, really whippings.
Two in your life?
In my, in my life.
Well, you were a much more holy man than me.
And much, well, I wasn't, I wasn't holy, I just had common sense. Because, you know, common sense is not common. But I had common sense, I got two. The, the, the first whipping, and it wasn't really a whipping, man, it was just a knockdown. I said something negative about my father. And man, my mother knocked me down. I must have been about 15.
Okay, well, well, I'm going to tell you now. I had, I had enough fear of my parents, that I never said a neg... I may have gotten a lot of whippings for getting into mischief, but I, I didn't have the rebellion one.
Well, the rebellion is that my father got some additional money, and I had been promised, I thought I was going to really get this new bicycle and new whatever, you know, and so forth. And so it didn't come through, and I said something negative about my father. Man, my mother knocked me down, hit me upside, man, knocked me down! Almost knocked me cold, because my mother was strong. She worked at a shirt factory. And, you know, I was crying, I got up, and my mother said to me, "Don't you ever say anything negative about your father. If you think in your mind that your father did something wrong, when you grow up and become a man, and marry, and have a family, don't you do it." And man, that was, that was the best lesson I, I got, you know. The next time I got a whipping, man, I was, you know, kind of guy like you. I would, I would go out and work, and, you know, I would never go to my parents and ask them for things, because you knew better. Because you knew what the limitations of your family budget was, income in your house. You know, you knew, not like these young people today. And so I would go out and work, and, you know, I would curb hop at places like Sonic and all that. I learned how to talk to people and get them to tip me, you know, and so forth. So I bought these Cardigan sweaters. And man, I was this little idly kid when I went to school, because everybody thought I was well-off. But, you know, I wasn't. It's that my mother worked on a shirt factory, so I had a lot of shirts. And then, you know, I could go and work and get me nice shoes, or get me this, or get me that. And so consequently, you know, I would end up going to school looking like I was well-off, but I really wasn't. And so consequently, I had bought these Cardigan sweaters. And my mother messed around and wore one of my sweaters to work. And man, I'm looking for my sweater, and when my mother came in, and I'm raising all kind of sand, and I messed around and knocked over a table or something, and broke something, you know, and so forth. And I was telling my mother, "Why would you wear my sweater?", blah, blah, blah. And my mother looked at me and started crying. And she said, "Boy, you mean to tell me you love a sweater more than you love your mother?" And man, I just broke down and started crying. And you know what I started thinking about? I was thinking about when I'd get up and go to school at 6:00 in the morning, my mother would always have me hot breakfast. I started thinking about, you know, she would always have my shirts on, and I'm looking good and all that. And I just broke down and started crying. And from that day on, I never took any kind of fanciness about clothing, even though I know how to dress, keep myself clean, and all that so forth. So I wasn't, I wasn't a rebellious kind of kid, you know. But nowadays, it's not that way, Commissioner. We have too many young people growing up without that family structure. That's why it's so important, the kinds of things that you do in your Commissioner's district with young people, and the kind of spirit and attitude that you have toward young people, that you, you love them, you respect them. You know that in this day and time in the 21st century, they have a difficult time. Especially single-parent young people living in apartment complexes and so forth. And the reason why you're willing to partner with our nonprofit organization to put labs in and give them access to educational development and so forth. But tell me...
Well, we've been talking about youth, and before we started, our brother Bonner was talking to us about the other end of life. And that is when folks die, and people who are, the, the technical term is pauper. It sounds like P-O-P-P-E-R, like a, like a jalapeno popper. But it's pauper, P-A-U-P-E-R, which, which is the old fancy English word for...
Poor.
Poor. And, and many of our folks, through circumstances, it's just the way of life, when they die, you can't take it with you, but they didn't have a whole lot to either leave behind to take care of their remains. And so let's talk about that a little bit, and what's going on with the county, because you actually tested me on this once.
Well, I tell you what, you, you, you make a good point, Commissioner. We, we were having lunch one day together, you and I, Perry Wooton and another pastor, Raymond Farley, over on the north side. And someone had just called him about an elderly member of the congregation who had passed and did not have the resources to take care of the remains. And while we were sitting having lunch at Perry's, you got on the phone and, and called someone who takes care of constituent services in your office, and immediately, in about five minutes, called back, the, the person in your office called back and said, "Okay, we've gotten that situation taken care of." And this was some elderly lady, I think she was in her late 80s in the church. And we didn't even know, to be honest with you, I know Reverend Farley didn't know at the time, that the county had a pauper's burial program, and you, you took care of that situation. So I'm glad that you brought that up. And explain it to the viewer and the audience, and how if it ever unfortunately occurs in their family or someone in their church that they know who they can contact.
The, the pauper services are handled through the Harris County Health Department. But the easiest way, if you have a family member, or a friend, or someone is in need of the pauper services, is to go ahead and contact our Community Assistance Department in Precinct 4. And that number is 832-927-4444. 832-927-4444. You dial that number, and it's their job, if you're a member of the community, to help serve you, to assist you, Community Assistance Department. And, and that's on anything. If you've got a drainage issue in your neighborhood, or if there is a, a something that's happening, sometimes it'll be a city's responsibility, not the county's responsibility, but it's their job to find out and connect.
Who's responsible?
Connect the pieces. And, and that day, I called our Community Assistance Department, and they connected us to the Harris Health System. And, and in that approach, what then we end up having is that, and I'd actually been there for the ribbon cutting as a Commissioner 11 years ago, but we do have a pauper cemetery out on the east side of town, and there's another one somewhere else. But one of the things since this day, that, that we were able to, you were able to find out that we had this service for those who are in need and don't, don't have, you know, that qualify for, for assistance, is that we now have a very, very diverse county with folks of differing religious beliefs and differing cultural beliefs. And the county provides cremation, and the county provides a traditional burial. There are some folks who would say that, you know, I, when I'm buried, I want to have a, what they would call, "Christian burial", which in, in their faith tradition means not be burned. Not be cremated. And, and...
Because the devil been trying to burn them while they were alive.
And so I, I grew up with my grandma talking about Christian burials, because it had gotten, but it's a lot cheaper to do the cremation. But in some of our other cultures, such as like in our Muslim culture, or in our Jewish culture, the things that we would do in a quote-unquote "Christian burial" or in a cremation would go against the wishes of their religion and their family. And, and the last thing that we should be doing in government is say, you know, "We'll provide you a service, but sorry about how you feel about it, you know, yeah, you're, you know, your uncle will be roasting in hell for the rest of your life in your mindset, but we gave him a burial." I mean, that's not, that's not sensitive, that's not appropriate. And so we're actually in the process right now of researching with all of these, the, the world has come to Harris County. And, and we are researching, how can we serve those who have been put into our care to make sure that everyone, if you can afford a funeral, you get to have the one that you wanted. If you cannot afford one, and the county provides it, we should be treating everyone with justice and dignity. Or as the prophet Micah would say, "Do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with your God." And so we need to do the right thing, that's an action. And we need to, in our things, have the right attitude, you know, love, mercy. It's love, that's an attitude. They want your heart, and then they want us to attachment. So we need to be, we, we need to do the right thing. We need to love helping people, and then we need to be attached.
And I, and I think really, and I, I know you have this kind of attitude and feeling. Harris County, and really the state of Texas, is one of the most diverse states and counties in the world.
The world.
You, you have, in Texas, at least a third of the people who live here were not born... You have, in Texas, at least a third of the people who live here were not born in the United States of America. You know, they're from Germany, they're from France, Mexico, Spain, they're from everywhere, all over the world and so forth. We are really, truly a melting pot county, melting pot state. And again, like you said, we have to be sensitive to cultural traditions that people have, especially when it comes to home-going services. And, you know, I think you are absolutely correct in how you're going about dealing with that issue. So we want to kind of get to the end of the program, but before, again, tell us programmatically, from a Commissioner's point of view, what your plans are for Precinct 4, how you intend to maximize community development to your constituents and love and serve them briefly in a minute or two.
So in, what was that, that the Apostle John wrote at the end of, I think it was him, who said that if you, oh, was it the end of the Book of Acts, that if all of the Acts had been written in here, there wouldn't be enough books to contain them all? So you said, okay, Commissioner, in two or three sentences, tell us all of your dreams and aspirations of service and the good things we want to do. But I'm, I'm going to tell you the basics, and that is that I think that we in Commissioner's Court are not lords and kings, but we are servants. And it is our job to serve the people of this county. Where you'll see me in disagreement with other political people is, is they won't tell Washington DC what to do, they won't tell Austin what to do, and I think we just need to be about...
They don't want to tell them what to do.
Let's do our, let's take our role seriously. Honor God, serve the people. And to that extent, that means, we talked about parks, somebody needs to make sure that the bathrooms in the parks are clean. That's not a glorious job. We're partnering with the city and some of the city parks to help mow them during grass-growing seasons, because they mow on a 28-day cycle. And so we've become a partner in Precinct 4 with some of their parks to mow them in the middle. And that's because we were able to work together for the good of the community, because you don't want your kids running in tall grass, where there could be any kind of critter or whatnot in there. And, you know, I don't want to use the word snakes in the grass, because that scares people. But when you have tall grass, mamas may not want to let their kids go play in that tall grass, because they don't know what might be in that tall grass. So we mow in the middle to partner, to serve. That's not glorious, that's not exciting stuff. It is our job to make sure that our roadways are well taken care of. We talked about that earlier in the program. And it's our job to make sure that your public safety is in mind, both with regard to your flood control, to make sure that those expenditures, we passed the historic bond, you know, on the anniversary four years ago of Harvey, we're coming up on that anniversary here again, and to make sure that our communities are safe. When you come to your parks, you know that it's going to be a safe place. When you're on your streets, you know that it's a safe place. We're working on a program now in one part of the city, to where they put up these big neon orange signs that said, you can't engage in prostitution here. Now, when I saw those signs, it hurt me. What neighborhoods that we call a nice neighborhood has a bright neon orange sign in front of it that says, you can't do prostitution here? I mean, are they upright inside all of your gated communities, you can't engage in prostitution here?
You understood.
And I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking of the mamas and their daughters, who have to go to school and pass by a big neon sign that says, you can't do prostitution here. And then I heard that the prostitutes were actually using the signs for shade.
Right.
Okay. Now, I understand the reason why you put them up, because you're trying to make a statement. But sometimes your words need to be backed by action. That's one of the reasons why we transferred, because some of those are right in front of our parks, we transferred funds to the constables. And prostitution is a complex problem. And the prostitutes are just one side of the equation. Remember the woman caught in adultery? Jesus wanted to know where, where are the accusers? And there's another question, where's the guy? Because to do adultery, it takes two. To have prostitution takes two. So what needs to be done is if you, instead of having a sign there, you got a cop there. I don't know that there'd be any customer of a prostitute who will want to do business in front of those homes, those apartments there, if they know that they'll be making a trip down to the popo's house. And so we need to cut it off at the root. And I'm looking forward to the day when we don't have signs like that. But mamas and daughters can go to school without having to look at a neon orange sign, and in the shade of it, the activity occurring that's described on it. So that's my vision, is to give us safe neighborhoods, to make sure that your potholes are fixed, that your roadways are going well, that the bathrooms in your parks are clean, that's mowed, and that we stick to the basics of service.
Houston, Harris County, you heard it directly from the Commissioner's mouth. And we want to thank you for being on the show. Encourage you, Harris County, Houston, if you live in Precinct 4, vote November the 8th. Vote for Jack Kegel. He will represent you well, serve you well. Houston, keep your paper in your car, keep Houston clean. God bless you.
Thank you.